Good morning. We'll call this meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion to secondly approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is our employee recognitions. The first one today we got is Mr. Melton, 25 years.
It looks like Steve is gonna talk.
Yeah, if I could say a few, few, few words. No. We really want to thank Brian for, for all of the work that he does. We're fortunate at Clay County and our citizens to have a dedicated leader. When I look out in the group of departments here, he's instrumental in providing guidance and direction to us. For this board's perspective, administration, he provides an important beacon, I guess, a moral compass for us to follow. And so, we appreciate all, all the work that he does. And, and I think as good of an attorney as he is, he's a good human being too. So, we're fortunate to have him here at Clay County. So, thanks, Brian.
You got one minute for Republicans.
Yeah, no. No. I'm glad.
Thanks, all the board.
Hey, thank you. And now, for 30 years from Miriam Danielson. For 30 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Nice to meet you, Miriam. Congratulations. Jessica's got a few words for you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, congratulations, Miriam. I'm sure these 30 years have flown by. She started, I think it was 30 years ago today.
I did think so, yes.
In a grant-funded position, which she worked for one year, and then she transitioned to a waiver case manager for 19 years, and for the last decade has been our Adult and Disability Services intake worker. Miriam truly embodies what it means to be an excellent social worker. She works tirelessly, day in and day out, to support the citizens that come into our office every day. And we just truly appreciate everything she does and are so grateful for her to be part of our agency. And like Steve said, she's just a great human and wonderful to work with. So, thank you, Miriam. I really appreciate all you do.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm really proud to work for Clay County. I think it's a really well-run organization, and it's a privilege. It has challenges. It's not easy work, but I feel like I'm in the right place and have helped a lot of people.
Thank you. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is citizens to be heard. Anybody in the audience would like to speak to? Some comments to make? You can give us your name and...
Hi, my name is James McInstra, or you can call me Jim. And I am a resident of Moorhead, so a resident of Clay County. And in 2022, I was appointed by Governor Walz to a seat on the Minnesota Board on Aging. So, I wanted to take this opportunity just to let the board know, the Clay County Commissioners know, that you do have a citizen in Clay County that serves on the State Board, appointed by Governor Walz. The week of October 25th, 26th, 27th, I'll be in St. Paul for some board meetings. In September, we had our annual outstate meeting, which was in Alexandria and that. And the role of the Board on Aging is to administer funds, both that are provided federally and from the state, to advocate for the elderly and aging and issues related to aging, and to advise the governor and his office on issues related to aging. Another thing I wanted to draw the county commissioners' attention to is if you have citizens, constituents, that you represent, that are, you know, wondering maybe how they can get involved. The Minnesota Secretary of State's website has a link on it in terms of open vacancy, open vacant seats for boards and commissions. That's basically how I got on it. I, I had been on this email list from the Secretary of State's website, and would get, like, email updates about open vacant seats on boards and commissions. And I've worked for many years in housing and homeless services, at Churches United, Lakes and Prairies. When I was still living in Illinois, I worked in senior housing. So, I had a lot of interest in issues regarding aging and the elderly. So, I thought looking at the Board on Aging might be a good fit. I applied. While, you know, later on, I got an email and a phone call asking if I'd want to be interviewed for the board. And went through the interview process, and then I found out I got a letter from the governor saying I was appointed. So, I kind of just wanted to let you know, you don't have to, like, have tons of initials after your name. You don't have to be a PhD or an MD or anything to be on one of these boards. They're, they're looking for people that are, you know, that are passionate about issues, want to serve, want to serve their fellow Minnesotans, things like that. So, I just wanted to draw the county commissioners' attention that, you know, there is a seat at the Minnesota Board on Aging that really is invested in Clay County and the elderly citizens in Clay County. So, thank you for letting me be here tonight, today, and to speak.
Hey, thank you, Jim.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I was going to ask you what your background was and why there was an interest, and I think you alluded to that, but echo your comments on, I think, Clay County and our region is really fortunate because there are so many invested citizens that are willing to advocate in St. Paul and around tables for the needs of our communities. So, thank you for being one of those individuals for doing that. We, we definitely are grateful for your presence there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we're all pretty much interested in aging.
You know, I should check out the website. I'm tired of it.
Do you have any others on the computer or anything?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We'll move on to the payment of the bills and vouchers.
Move that we approve the payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
We got a motion to secondly approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next time we got the minutes from September the 19th. Need to be approved.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to secondly approve the bills from September the 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
Next thing, we're gonna have a United Way campaign presentation by Rita. Oh, you gotta bring a whole bunch of people with you, okay. You all got one minute. No. Oh, okay. No, it's an important event every year. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having us here this morning at Administration. We always appreciate your support and your encouragement for our United Way campaign each year. And this year, I have brought the folks that are my backbone, and when I say I need something, they're the first ones to raise their hand, and they don't know how much they're appreciated for that. So, we're gonna do a small presentation, and I mean small. We have a PowerPoint to start up here. There we go. Okay, so... Thank you. Jackie's the best. All right. So, we're gonna kick off our 2023 United Way campaign. It's gonna start this week, on Thursday, I believe it is. Our employees should be getting the emails from United Way with their online e-pledges. So... Today, I'm Rita Ruckert. I'm the Employee Campaign Coordinator here at Clay County. With me, I have Bella Lee, she's the United Way Resource Development Manager. I have Sarah Masterra, she's the Campaign Cabinet Volunteer from, on loan from Bell Bank. James O'Donnell, you folks know him, he's the Superintendent of the Juvenile Detention. And Ray Gordon is here from Social Services. And Kristen LaParte is the Supervisor over at Clay County Social Services as well. So, that's who's here with me today. So, I'm going to have Ray go over the activities that we did for 2022 to raise our funds for our special events, and also do some business acknowledgements.
Hi. So, last year, we tried to up our game with our extracurricular events to help boost our campaign dollars. So, quite a few were held over at the Government Center, with a few being held over at the Family Service Center as well. We did a pumpkin weight guess, I believe that was a dollar a guess. A taco bar lunch over here was put on by the Juvenile Center. We put on a social service bake sale down at the, in the lobby in the Family Service Center, which was quite successful. There were some guessing jars, just adding to the total of our 2022 campaign. Just some business acknowledgements. We had some businesses donate some items to us, which we used for a drawing for employees who completed their pledge forms. So, Anytime Fitness provided a trial membership. Casey's General Store provided some pizza certificates, which I know are much appreciated. I love Casey's Pizza. Jay Smoke &amp; Barbecue provided a gift certificate and a T-shirt. Midtown Tavern provided gift certificates as well. And then Reese &amp; Riley's provided us some gift bags. Those all, again, were handed out to employees through a drawing if they turned in their pledge form.
And I just want to mention that there was no stipulation that they had to pledge. They just had to turn in the form acknowledging they received it. Whether they donated or not, they were still, that still earned them drawings, so... Bella and Sarah are gonna give us some financial information.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Bella Lee, and I am a representative at United Way of Cass-Clay, so you're a local United Way. And I'll have Sarah introduce herself just quick, too.
Here, I can share. No, I got it, I got it. Real quick, I'm just gonna say, good morning. My name is Sarah Masterra. I am supporting Rita and her team as a volunteer for the United Way. This is my first year as an employee coordinator, a cabinet volunteer. I think I've messed all of that up. It's, there's a long acronym. But I'm excited to support you guys and see what you do, and I'm excited to volunteer for the United Way. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Sarah. At United Way, of being a nonprofit, we rely a lot on volunteer support to be able to do the work that we do. I'm just gonna brief you guys just shortly, a little bit more about United Way, what we're up to, and then we'll go over some of those financials of your guys' Clay County's past giving history. So, at United Way, we service the Clay and Cass counties. So, you're Dollar State within those counties. We specialize in areas of homelessness, preventing hunger, mental health services, extra education for children, job education, with the ultimate goal of lifting and keeping families out of poverty in, in our local counties. We do that by activating and inspiring the entire, the community to really come together to figure out how we can partner with each other to solve these really large challenges we have in our community for generations to come. So, we're looking at the holistic approach of the whole family, where we can, where those gaps are and how we can fill those gaps. How this relates to Clay County is a lot of the services you guys provide are an addition of what we are supporting. So, supporting the programs that we are funding helps alleviate a lot of the different work that you guys are doing in Social Services, or the Juvenile Center, or the courthouse. And so, being able to take some of that off of your guys' plate and some of that weight so you guys can focus less on the crisis scenarios, and leave that up to some of the programs that we're funding in those areas. So, you can see up on the screen, this is Clay County's five-year giving history. Looking at 2022 column, highlighted top number is gonna be your employee giving from last year. So, Clay County as a whole, from employees, raised $12,771. Number under that, Workplace Special Events. So, that was all the funds raised from the bake sale, the pumpkin weight contest, all those things. So, $2,572, with a total of $15,343 from Clay County, which is absolutely amazing. And we are incredibly thankful for your guys' support and your continued support of the United Way, and all the work that you guys continue to do in the community as well. So, just thank you.
I just wanted to point out that last year, when I came, we gave you guys the goal that we wanted to get to $15,000. And we made it. So happy about that.
That's amazing. Not by a whole lot, but we made it.
Made it. Yeah. It was a decent increase from the year prior.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, looking at the year prior, the total was just over $11,000. So, you guys can see that in 2019, you guys hit around that same number of that 15 grand as well. So, getting the chance to be able to be back to that number is pretty amazing. So, we're really thankful for all the work that Rita and the committee does for this as well. Some other numbers to point out is, it's gonna be, the fourth number from the bottom was number 68. So, 68 donors gave to United Way of your employees. Another number that we should point out is the number of leaders, 15. So, that 15 people gave over the $300 level or more. So, that's a number that we like to track as well. Am I going over this, or did you want me to? Okay. So, total employees participated was 68 employees, like I just mentioned. 32% of the funds raised were donated from only 15 of the 617 employees. And then, if the 549 employees that did not participate last year only gave $1 per pay period, so $24 a year, that would result in an increase of giving by over $13,000. So, thinking about that small impact that we can all have, and that's truly who we are at United Way, is coming together as a whole community and seeing the impact that we can have when we all come together. And this year, we are focusing on our goals around homelessness, of preventing homelessness in our community. And I know that's something that's in the forefront of a lot of people at the Clay County, working with those programs. And so, we are working on long-term housing solutions for preventing homelessness, as well as supporting shelters, too. But we know that the thing to prevent homelessness is homes. So, that's the solution, and so that's what we're working towards. We know that on any given night, 1,000 people in our community are experiencing homelessness. And 200 of those 1,000 are children. So, we're working to identify and work with those 200 kids or those 1,000 individuals to find them safe and stable homes, and really creating empathy around those situations, because we truly don't know what somebody has gone through, and just getting a better understanding of what our community's needs are.
Thank you, Bella.
Thank you.
So, Walt Disney said, "The way to get started is to quit talking and to begin doing." So, we have already started our 2023 fundraising. We've had some events at the Government Center. In January, we had penny jar wars. I just want to point out, that picture on the left, that's a $20 bill that was wrapped so small, it took effort to get it unwrapped, and it was tucked inside the penny jars. Our employees are so creative, but they're also, they had a lot of fun, and they've already asked, "Can we do the penny jars again?" So... Not everything has to be work. You can have fun and still raise money. In February, they asked for another bake sale. We just had one in October, they wanted another one, so I said, "Okay, we'll have a bake sale." March, we had a baked potato luncheon bar. That went over very well. $5, you got a decent meal, baked potato, and I think we had brownies. In May, we had a pie social. It's not big things, folks. It's little tiny things that add up. And it brings camaraderie to the office, and it's five minutes out of their date to just go grab that piece of pie and go eat it at their desk, or eat it in the break room. It's just another $5 that we can put toward United Way funds. So, in 2023, in June, July, we had a school supply drive, and Kristen's gonna tell us about that.
Since Commissioner Gross said we only had a minute per person, I'll keep this short and sweet since other people went over a minute. Like Rita said, in June and July, we had our school supply drive. There was a box on every floor, over at Social Services, as well as over at the Government Center. I won't read everything. You can see there was quite a few items that were supplied, and for sure, we assisted at least 11 kiddos, because there were 11 backpacks that were supplied. So, at least 11 kiddos went to school with, with supplies this year through our school supply drive.
Just, you know, a lot of us take for granted just having a pencil. Right now, I came without a pen. It's the little things, and these kids, they, they don't have their own resources to go get these things. So, it's the little things that we can supply to make a big difference. So... James, can you tell us about what's coming up for 2023?
Sure. Looks like October 5th, pledged emails will be coming out. Reminder email will be coming out 20 days later, on the 25th, and then the campaign closes on the 27th. We got a couple of things coming up. We got soup luncheon, October 19th, bake sale, October 26th, book and media sale, October 17th through the 19th, and then a chili feed on October 25th. And then, there'll be one more sneaked in there somewhere that, that we'll do, from the Juvenile Center area there, that, we'll just do whatever feels right at the time.
James and his staff, last year, did the taco bar luncheon, and if you missed it, I'm sorry. Make sure you hit it this year. It was amazing. The decorations, the food, it was great. It was a great, it was a great event. So... Our goal this year, I'm gonna shoot for $16,000. So, I hope it's not lofty, but I think it's doable. I personally want to thank James, and Ray, and Kristen, and over at the Government Center, Tracy and Greg, because these folks, when I say I need something, their hands are up, and they're right there, and they're on it for me. And without what they do for me and for the county, I can't do this. So, I really want to show my appreciation for that, as well as for our Commissioners and our Administration, who do support us. And that's why we're here today, is so that our department heads, our staff, our departments can see that we do have the support from the Administration and from our Commissioners, and that it is worthy cause. So, we're ready for questions if you have any. Otherwise, that's pretty much all we have.
Okay. I was expecting a song or something, y'all there.
No, come by.
I too would.
Sorry, Frank.
I mean, I definitely would encourage, I'm surprised at the number, 68 people. I hope that we can get 100 or 200 people to sign up this year. It really would, I think it really would make the county look good here, and help you out with your campaign, and hopefully...
We appreciate those 68 people.
Yeah.
But we'd take every one more that we can get.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else?
Anybody else who want to make some comments? I appreciate what you're doing, Rita, and your staff there, and hopefully, you have a good year.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I guess I do want to remind the people in Clay County that when you get your notices, please respond to them. And James, you're in line here. Request to rehire of an open counselor position.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here to request permission to rehire an open position in our SCARE facility. It's in our 2023 budget. It's pretty critical. It's in our, well, it'd be for our treatment program, so it's, it'd be much appreciated if we could get that refilled. And then, any backfill that would come possibly with that.
Okay. Is this someone that resigned or retired, or...
This is somebody that just didn't work out.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the rehire?
Second.
We got a motion, second, to approve the position to hire and to, for backfill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing we got, Rhonda, request approval of the purchase Pavilion by Cachet Software for billing public healthcare programs. And you can correct the wording, I mean, whatever pronunciation of that is.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I brought the truth with me to this place. Okay, so, we are here today to request approval to purchase a solution...
Oh, there we go. Purchase a solution called Pavilion. It's by Cachet Software. This is a company out of Oakdale, I think it was, Oakdale, Minnesota, Washington County. Susan, from our fiscal supervisor, from our auditing department, was at a conference, and there was a demonstration of this product via Washington County and Cachet Software. And she came back very, very excited about it, and emailed me multiple times about this particular solution. So, we scheduled for them to come and provide a demonstration to us. Lori, and Stacy, and Rory, myself, and Susan all participated in that demo, and we were all pretty impressed with what it can do for us in terms of our billing, particularly for our healthcare programs, where we're billing managed care organizations and Medicaid. Susan can certainly attest to the difficulties and the rebilling that has to occur, and the resubmissions, and the issues that we've been having. A lot of manual time is spent with some of those billings, and this would really automate it and make it very streamlined. So, we were very impressed with it. We also, honestly, were pretty impressed with the costs not being too out of reach for us to try to implement as soon as we could. You'll see down there, there is a one-time cost for implementation, and then there is a, a service package that you purchase based on how many clients you're billing per month. This is a product that we feel we can capture federal financial participation on, because it is billing healthcare programs. And so, that would reduce the cost in both of those scenarios by 50%. The 2023 budget, we, I reviewed our administrative expenditures and feel that that $2,000 could be absorbed within our 2023 budget, as we have various items that have some underspending, so I think that we'd be able to cover that. And then, the service package, again, it's, it's, we're billed how many, based on how many clients we're billing, and we feel that that's manageable as well, as well as in the 2024 budget, because I will have some adjustments to make based on trends going forward, and so I would not see adjusting the 2024 budget at all. I'll let, Susan, do you have anything to add in terms of, will help us?
Believe it or not, we don't have a billing system or a posting system for our claims that have to be submitted to the health plans. So, all of that is done manually, and when I say manually, that's extracting all of the time that is entered by our social workers here in Clay County, and going through that time and sorting it, and adding all of the values and requirements that the health plans need in order to, to bill those. So, it's a lot of manual work. This would be a way to automate that, and really save a lot of our staff time. So, I think it would be cost-effective in that way, and really pay for itself, and free up some time for some other business that we need to take care of.
Yeah, are you saying that there's a lot of billing that's not being done, then? That the, a lot of plants that aren't being...
No, it's all being done, but it's all being done manually through spreadsheets.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I have a question on that. Yeah, and hopefully, that'll help with your department, as well as maybe more people working, available to work with people rather than numbers. But, so, at the Fall Conference for DHS, I heard quite a bit of rumbling about this. But, so at the fall conference for DHS, I heard quite a bit of rumbling about this. And they were putting a lot of weight on the state, actually, for them having, they use the word archaic systems. Now, does this piece, I see how it works here locally, but does it also help the way they receive the information or is it two separate matters?
Well, it's really two separate. So a lot of the systems modernization efforts that AMC and Max are pushing for are related to our systems in child support called Prism, our systems in our financial services division called MAXIS and MMIS, and then our social service information system where we feel a lot of those programs have archaic features that we need to work with the state on resolving. This is part and parcel to it. This is a very small piece of the whole puzzle in terms of systems that social services, human services work within. This is not state, it's not connected to the state. However, they do work with the state in pulling data from some of those systems that we're talking about need modernization. So there's a piece to that. And then there, it would help us automate our billing to Medicaid as well, which of course DHS is connected with, so.
Well, thank you for that. Yeah, and certainly in the state of automation, or technology, excuse me, we shouldn't be handwriting information anymore. No, thank you.
Yeah, over the last several years, I've noticed your ability to really keep up with technology and how that's improved. I think it's from the filing systems that you've done where everything is now scanned and documentation services and all those types of things. And I think this is just the next step. And I'm glad you took the time to go to research it, and I think it'll pay dividends for everybody in the future. So thank you for researching it, and I do support it. And if it's all right, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the request.
Second.
You've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? I notice you didn't mention it's going to save any position. You just said it's going to help people do other work. Okay.
Well, one of the things in terms of that, what we've talked about is over the last 10 years, 15 years, the changes, the different grants we've got, the different managed care organizations we're working with, the, all of the added things that have landed in the auditors' plate and not just for Susan, but the others that work in social service programs. And we haven't added any staff, but we've added programs, we've added grants, we've added complexity. So this was really the idea that this could help us to relieve some of the pressure that exists right now.
I too am glad that Susan, you went to that conference or whatever it was and brought along this plan here. Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Lori, you didn't even have to talk.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Justin, has a final approval for voucher SP 1401-191 and for 14619021.
Yes, so good morning. The first item I have is, on the agenda is the final contract voucher for the project numbers you listed. So this was for the Turn Lane Project in Glendon. Celine Brothers was the contractor. I think the project turned out really good. The city and the county are both pleased. The final amount to be approved is $517,885.50. The original bid was $551,783, so about six and a half percent under. The reason for being under was we estimated a lot more contaminated materials than we actually found, so it's good to have one come in a little bit under.
Okay, I'm glad that you got that project completed. I mean, I wish they would have done it the first time when they did the project, you know, just, I mean, spending an extra 500, of course, I don't know if it was an extra 500,000, but we had to go back in there and redo a project that was done just a year or so ago, so.
I agree.
But I'm glad that they came in 6% lower.
Mr. Chair, that was a MINDOT let project.
Yes, right.
Yeah. This did have LPP funds on it as well, so MINDOT did foot most of the bill.
Yeah, okay. Just had to get that out of there.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the final contract.
Okay. Second. You've got a motion, a second to approve contract SP 1401-191, the Glendon Project. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Your next one is?
Yeah, so the second item I have is changing the requirements on the assistant engineer position. As you are all aware, this position has been open about a year and a half with no qualified applicants. I would like to open up that applicant pool some to see if we are able to attract some more potential applicants. I did bring this up at Highway Tracking and PIC Committee. So kind of what I'm proposing to do is currently it's open to somebody with a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering that's within two years of getting their professional registration. What I would like to do is keep that requirement, but then also open it to somebody with a four-year construction management degree or a two-year civil tech degree, just to see if we can get some more applicants and attract some more people.
Excuse me, before we go on, I want to go back to the last motion. Did that cover both the contracts?
My motion was for both.
Okay, very good. Okay, sorry.
No problem. So kind of what I'm proposing to do, like I said, is opening it to, obviously, the requirements that are there now, but also opening it at a little different grade I've been working with Darren on what the grade would be. It'd likely be one or two steps lower than it is currently, but opening it to a construction manager with a four-year bachelor's of science or a two-year civil tech degree.
Okay.
And then obviously, right now, it's, the position requires a PE within two years of hire and three to five years of experience. My proposal, if we are going to look at a construction manager with having more than three to five, more like five to eight.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we did talk about this in Highway Track. Can you, if you go with the construction manager, what you're suggesting here, in the event of your absence, can we talk about who would then be qualified to sign documents?
Okay, so as far as, say, a set of plans, if we're going out to bid, that is required to have a professional engineer's signature on. So what some counties have done, we've been reached out to in the past as they either have an MOU or some sort of agreement with another county in the event that I was gone for a significant amount of time, that they could cover in my absence.
I guess I just, I wanted the board to be aware that if we go that route and if, for some reason, Justin would be unavailable for a period of time, that the only way we would be able to have some professional sign it would be to go outside of our current staffing to do that. I think that, that's kind of a, I don't know that we have any other options right now because this position's been open for a long time and we've had no activity on it, so.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Go ahead.
Justin, are there times in which you have to sign in the situation that Commissioner Campbell's talking about? Have you had to sign for other counties that are in the same situation?
I haven't, but I would, was it this spring we were reached out to by Becker County to see if, and it was kind of unknown at that time how long he was going to be out, but if he was going to be out a significant amount of time, they asked.
Excuse me. Could a city engineer, like, in Morehead do that or?
Yeah, I mean, as long as you have your professional engineer license.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up to Commissioner Mosjo's question, I know in the past, we've had requests from other counties to act in a temporary fashion on behalf of, I think Wilken County at one time did, and I think Becker County at one time might have. And I believe our previous engineer did sign on behalf of a county who was short their engineer for a period of time. So it does happen.
And in District Four at Swift County, recently, they just hired an engineer, but for the last like nine months, they've had another county kind of coming in there and helping out until they were able to hire a county engineer.
And then, Mr. Chair, if I can too, so in your, part of your whole process, you have, you draw up plans for projects and all those types of things. Would a, with what you're recommending here, the type of individual that you'd be recommending to be considered, would they have the knowledge and ability to design and draft those types of things?
Yes, so I wouldn't want to hire somebody with a construction management background that's built nothing but buildings. It would be somebody that has road construction experience, so I would feel confident with oversight by myself. So any sort of pavement design would still have to be done by me because that's signed by a professional engineer as well.
Are we looking at changing our staffing then, or are we looking at keeping the assistant engineer on, still on our, I don't know, our part of your staff? Or we're going to change it now that it's going to be assistant county engineer position? I mean, are we changing the position?
Changing the?
Did you say this person retired or whatever, resigned?
Mm-hmm.
Will we go back to the regular position again, or are we looking at staying at this position now?
I mean, ultimately, if the market changes, it would, I would love to have another engineer. Obviously, right now, the market is dictating that it's just not, it's not working.
I guess what I was trying to say, are we going to change our staffing lineup or?
I think what your request is to only change the qualifications, so not change the amount of staffing or the need. It just changed the qualifications so folks can apply a different set of skills.
That's correct.
But with the, if I can, Mr. Chair, with the change in qualifications, would that then, would that change a PDQ description then? Would we have to do something different? I'm seeing a yes and a no head nod here, so.
So I guess I can answer, and then Steve can too. From, when I looked at the PDQ, there's nothing in there that specifically says you're signing plans or anything like that. So I don't think, in my opinion, the PDQ, other than the education requirement, wouldn't change, because they would still be capable of everything within that PDQ.
Okay, okay.
I guess I was just wondering, say, two months from now, someone says, hey, I'm licensed and all that, you know, I'll apply for that position, you know, would we be looking at that or would we say, no, we've got, we got it covered? I mean, do we go back to that again or?
So in two months, are you saying that the position is still open?
No, it's not open. Say we filled it.
Okay.
Then two months later, someone comes along and says you have an opening for an engineering.
I guess I don't.
I was just wondering whether we're changing our staffing or not.
No, I don't, I mean, it would just be one position that I would, it'd be the same position, just different education. So if it was filled, we wouldn't be looking to fill it with another engineer, say.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering whether we, if someone with the qualification for an engineer comes along, whether we want to hire someone like that.
Mr. Chair, I think, you know, over the last year, year plus, Justin and I have met probably about once a month and talked about, our goal and hope was is that we would have someone that had the PE license. Justin's done an amazing job over the last year and a half. I think the realistic piece is that unfortunately, we haven't had, we haven't had someone apply with that piece. And I think that from an organizational standpoint, we've worked hard to try to identify what could be the most helpful to him. And unfortunately, at this point, we, not having a PE, this is our best path forward.
You know, going to your question, which was a good one, in terms, you know, and again, I think that leads to, also can lead to what we're always concerned about is succession planning.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, so, you know, we always want our supervisor and everybody to stay around for a long time. We had somebody, you know, we're seeing people here 25 years, 30 years, and we love to see that. But, you know, one never knows what might happen and when something is needed. And, you know, so I don't, you know, like, right now, the, we're seeing in that engineering market, the diversion project is, has sucked up an awful lot. Wouldn't you agree with that?
I would agree.
In terms of engineering, well, that project is scheduled to be finished in 2027, I think, is the timeline for that to be done. And at that point in time, who knows what might free up, you know? I don't think we should be, I think we need to do this now for this, but I, you know, I think at the, at some point in time, if that thing, if that same scenario came up that you talked about, I think a future board would still need to look at that and say, okay, well, we still have this person on staff. That person should still be able to fit in where they're at.
Yep.
But at the same point in time, you know, from a succession standpoint, when there's availability, we should latch onto it.
And I.
And I, and that goes.
Well, that's just what I'm concerned about. I mean, say, and I hope he never leaves, Justin.
Right.
I'm not, but if that scenario came up, that Justin said, I'm going to, opportunity came up here, I'm going to take it, we wouldn't have anybody that can step up.
That's right.
Okay.
So you're, I mean, you raised a really important question, and I think that, that just becomes then, if Justin were to come to us and say, well, now I have somebody who is willing to work for us, who has these requirements, then the board needs to look at how do you, how could we redesign that?
Yeah.
If that's, yeah, if that situation were to arise, I think it is, there is enough going on within the county. I think we could definitely restructure in a way that would support that.
Okay.
Right.
I think you came up with a good, a good idea here, Justin, of just looking at another situation, so. Okay. Go ahead, Paul.
Let's finish up on that. So in this job, a person without these qualifications, so as they're, say you get a hire, everything seems to be melding and gelling with the work you're expecting and what they're doing. Does it ever allow them enough time or working with them so they can be working toward the degree or, I don't know what that takes. I'm assuming that it takes quite a commitment on the other side.
Yeah, to be a licensed professional engineer, you need the four-year bachelor's of science from a accredited school.
Yeah.
And then you also, once you get that degree, you have to take a test, which is called your, then you become an EIT, an engineer in training. It's your fundamentals of engineering test, and then four years after that, you have to take your PE. So I guess if we were to hire somebody with a construction management degree, it would take them going back to school, which requires a lot more math and a lot more other credits. So I think it would be difficult.
Right. And so I do support the change. However, I see not being able to attain the goal that we're hoping to attain then, right?
Yeah.
So we're kind of, to your point, right? It just seems like we've created a, almost feels like a new position to me.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And, you know, you're hoping, you know, what happens if someone, will you ever think about wanting to advertise for someone with an engineering degree then?
Mm-hmm.
Or do we wait, you know, see how this goes for a few years? And I know those are future discussions, but, you know, having a vacancy for a year and a half isn't helping anybody either.
Right.
Okay. Well, I hate to bring up the question, but I mean, I mean, you got a good plan here now, but I was just looking at the future. If we're changing our staffing or not? Are we adding a staffing position or just changing the staffing position?
I would say at this time, not adding, but in the future, if that situation does arise, I think it'd be something that I would bring to the Highway Tracking Committee, and it would warrant a really good discussion.
Okay.
So in your 2024 budget that you had submitted, and that's within our preliminary budget that we've approved, that budget of yours included that there would have been an assistant engineer hired.
That's correct.
So, you know, I don't know, you know, from a, from a standpoint of where they would be on a pay grade and step, I'm not so sure that this, this person should be at the same as what the qualifications would be for, you know, somebody who has the qualifications to be what we want.
Yep.
In a perfect world. But I, but I think for 2024, you know, I, I think, Commissioner Gross, we have to be really, really careful that we don't burn this guy out.
Right, I agree.
You know, and, and so he's, before he became engineer, he was assistant engineer, and there were two of them doing this stuff. And since he's And since he's been on, he's been doing it alone.
Yeah. Well, I realize that too, and I'm-
So, so we need to do something on the interim, and if, you know, going back to what I said earlier, I think if, if something rains down, engineers qualified and willing to work for us, we should probably look at it and, and jump on it.
Okay, very good.
At that time, but-
That's why I'm just asking, did our staffing change?
Yeah. Well, I, it, I think it, I think from, from a budget standpoint, whoever we're going to have in this position probably won't be paid quite what the other one would be. That's how the staffing change would be.
I agree with that, yes.
And that's something I have been working with Darren on.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, to throw something out, should the position title be changed to assistant to the county engineer? As opposed to assistant county engineer?
Um-
That almost identifies that position as an engineer position.
Right. That is a good point. It's something that we did talk about a little bit at Highway Tracking. I guess I haven't changed it yet with Darren, but I think if the situation arises where we do hire somebody like a construction manager, I think that job titles should probably change, just because they technically would not be an engineer.
I, that might be a good way to do it, as to what Dave talked about. I, that, I think that could be worked out together with Human Resources, I think, to figure that one.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, if, did you want?
I was just going to say, they might, you may want to work with them and change title to construction manager, whatever's appropriate, but when, when we make the motion, I think it would be good to include with any, any determined type, change in title.
And I want, because I was going to make a motion, but I, if I can, Mr. Chair, can I ask Darren, do you have a, do you have a thought on that as Human Resources?
Yeah, that, that's certainly doable. I, I think that's a good idea, so that if the person isn't truly an engineer, the title change would be appropriate.
I, I heard two different options here, one being an assistant to the engineer, and I've also heard then just a construction manager. What, from your standpoint, what would make the most sense? Because I, apparently we want to include it in the motion, and I want to make a motion.
Um, I would probably go towards more of a construction manager, because assistant to the county engineer could kind of mean like an administrative assistant or something like that.
Yeah. All right, very good.
I just want to maybe comment on that. I, you know, I, I think I, I want to continue, personally, continue calling it the assistant county engineer position. And the reason is, in the construction world, construction manager means a whole different thing.
Mm-hmm.
And it's kind of a more, like you talked about, a different track of, of education. And, and I think it would be a seismic shift for what we're actually looking for. Keeping it as the assistant county engineer position open means we might have an engineer come to the table and apply for this. But if we're changing it to assistant to, to me, that sounds more administrative than, than the work that you're talking about. And then, you know, if you go construction manager, I think that, that limits an engineer's ability to apply personally.
And I, I do know other counties, just obviously growing up in Wilken County, they had an assistant county engineer for a long time. That was just a technician. He was not an actual engineer.
Okay, well, that, that, thank you for that. I, that, that, Mr. Chair-
And I guess I'll comment on kind of what Jenny said, too. I think the PDQ range is way beyond what a construction manager does. It's not, I think a construction manager is more focused, whereas the assistant county engineer has a broad spectrum of different things they do.
I think you and Darren can come up with a good, good name for it.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that we change the requirements as proposed by, for the assistant county year, county engineer as proposed, with the final determination of grade and step to go, be worked out with Human Resources.
Second.
And we got a motion as second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Get her done. Okay, now we're going to request approval for allocating public safety funds divided by the 2023 legislature.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Just maybe just tee it, tee this up. The next three items are all related to the public safety fund. As this board's aware, Clay County received $942,000 in a one-time payment to, to deal with pub- public safety issues here within Clay County. This board set up a committee earlier this summer, and on September 5th, came together as a work group to hear the recommendations from the committee. On the 12th, this board approved a number of items, and there's also several items that are on the agenda today that I needed a little bit of tweaking. And so, so the next three items are fall, fall is part of that work group that we had. And the first item here is the, I'll turn it over to the sheriff.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Thanks for having us here this morning. The first item that we do have is a request to move four deputies up one line on their current pay grid. On 9/18, this was presented at PIC. When we spoke about it at PIC, it was determined to bring this to the Public Safety Committee. Reason being is the next day, the county was going to set the mill levy, and this request had the potential to change that mill levy. And we felt that using the public safety funds would be appropriate for this request. On the 26th, we did present this at the Public Safety Committee as well. The Public Safety Committee, through discussion, came up with this, with this recommendation. One of the reasons for that is because on the 26th as well, we, or I should say, we, the county board, approved to hire two additional deputies at, or advertise the positions, steps one through seven. So we felt that this was a, a good option for our current staff to move up one line on their current pay grid. And it would be a request of approximately $11,164 from the public safety funds for this.
Mr. Chair, if I may, ju- just to, and the two new deputies that, that were approved were also, the first year was also coming out of the public safety funds, right?
That is correct, yep.
And, and Mr. Chair, just a, one of the parts of the discussion that we had, and maybe while you asked why we're shifting these officers up a grade, with the board's action, some of these deputies would have been better served to quit their job and then reapply under, under our cer- our new change of the, of the, of the experience base. So, they're good officers, and, and so we were looking to move in that direction.
Okay, we're looking just to put a step increase in there, not a grade increase.
It's a line increase, just one line, not a, not a grade increase, just a line increase.
Okay.
Yep. One line on the step.
And if I can add to it in discussion, that will be a singular incident. There's no long-term, except with these individual employees, with their future steps and increases. But this is not anything's going to, it's a one-time deal. This isn't going to have long-term effects on new hires.
Those are the new hires, I think, could be hired anywhere from steps one through seven.
That is correct, yeah. The new hires would be steps one through seven. It's going to depend on experience. If we get a brand-new person in here, that applies, then it would, they'd probably start out at step one. But if we get somebody with extensive amount of experience, we want to start them out at that higher step.
And that would require the approval of the sheriff and of the county administrator.
Yes. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we allocate $11,164 in public safety funds to move four deputies on, on one line on grade 18.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion as second to approve the request. All in favor?
Aye.
Most, very good. Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the next item that we have, also it comes with a public safety, public safety funding request. One of the original requests came out of the county attorney's office, would be to purchase two additional cameras, or two cameras that would be used in various assault cases. The cameras are, and maybe Mr. Melton could speak more on exactly what the, the benefit of that camera would be.
They're infrared-type cameras, so the idea being, a lot of times where victims of, of crime, specifically domestic abuse, strangulation-type cases, oftentimes what can happen is injuries don't show up for two to three days, and officers have to go back, follow up with those victims, to be able to take pictures of those bruising, that type of thing. With these cameras, the actual physical assault will show up the, you know, the day of the actual event. Those cameras would help be able to, to show that evidence. So it's a useful tool to, to help with, with instance, whether it's domestic abuse, other assaultive-type behavior where that, that evidence is, is there, it's just under the skin currently. Those infrared-type cameras will actually show up beforehand and, and help with prosecution. So we thought it'd be a very useful tool. It's been used in other jurisdictions, I think, pretty effectively. And so we thought, having two of those, and then working with our law enforcement partners to be able to get those out with them, would be a, a very good thing to help with future prosecution.
That's a good idea.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move for approval of the public safety funds being used to purchase two cameras.
I'll second the motion, and then I have a question.
Go ahead.
Assuming that we'll have some sort of internal service fund to prepare for replacement of said cameras, have we talked about that?
I guess we haven't specifically talked about that, but it might be something we'd have to look at. Without having had them, I don't know useful life, that kind of thing. I don't know if five years is what, you know, is a useful life, or, you know, does software, that kind of thing, but we'd have to look at that in future budgets if there's offer updates or something like that.
Yeah, I, I think that would be wise, given how valuable to the departments they could be.
My hope would be we'll find that they are very useful and look to, you know, have potentially more, you know, across, but this is more of a, a kind of a trial project to see how well they, you know, get out there with different law enforcement agencies and how useful they are. So, I, I think there might be some updates in the future.
Okay, we got a motion as second to approve the camera purchase from the funds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most, okay. Very good. Okay, now, the last one, we got this.
I'll thank you, Mr. Chair. The final item before you this morning is a request utilizing public safety funds to acknowledge the, the hard work and dedication of, of specifically three of our, of our departments and employees within those departments. The, the recommendation or request before you this morning would be is that employees receive public safety funds through a stipend based on their years of service within Clay County, as of December, as of December of this year. Through that, through the breakdown, we worked with Ms. Johnson in establishing criteria for that. And we would be looking to utilize paying those, paying the stipend over two payments. One, the first payment would come in at the end of December, or beginning of January, which would receive the funding, and the second payment would come in July, which would receive the second, second allocation of the funds. The, the, the areas that we'll be addressing would be in the county attorney's office, the sheriffs, excuse me, the county attorneys, the sheriff deputies, and the correctional officers. There were arranged a minimum and a maximum allotment for those different departments based on, based on education requirements. There's a, there's also were adjustments made to positions in the sheriff's department and in the correctional facility for those officers and, that have different ranks or different positions. The employees that are recently, have recently been hired are eligible to receive half of the stipend, the minimum, whatever that is. And, and anybody that's hired as part of the 2024 budget would not be eligible for that. So, the guidelines of the public safety fundings allow for stipends to, to, from the Public Safety Committee, or, excuse me, the guidelines from the public safety guidelines allow this, this stipend to be paid. The Public Safety Committee believes that's a good opportunity to recognize our public safety employees. That ideal for any questions.
So with this request, the two or three officers that just got a step increase, they would sort of get like a double, double payment, right? For the longevity and for their, for the step increase was just approved.
That would be correct, Mr. Chair. Two separate items, but yes, they would qualify under, under both of those if they're, as long as they've been here longer than the last-
Any further questions? Yes?
Just an observation on this. These funds have come in, part of the mandate from the state, or the directives from the state, is for supporting incentivizing the positions in the sheriff's office. This gives us an opportunity to use these funds in a one-time fashion, instead of moving people up and impacting on future cost of salaries. This allows us to compensate our personnel without incurring long-term additional debt.
Yes.
This is all paid for out of the funds received for public safety.
Right. Yeah. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion, if you like that.
Thank you, Paul.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
We got a motion as second. You know, I do agree with the, what we're doing here, you know, but sometimes I feel for the, all the other good employees we have in the county. I wish there would have been something for all the county employees, and not just one, several departments that we've got right here. But I think utilizing the funds that we've got here, a good idea. Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, based on your comments, I just want to follow up. I know there was been a, there's work done through the legislature, and, and, you know, I, I think, I think these funds were targeted for exactly what we're using them for.
Right.
And I, you know, in, in our public safety committee meetings, I know, like, we had dialogue back and forth with, with the sheriff and the assistant sheriff, and one of the, you know, they advocated for this as well, the, the need for this. Sheriff's departments throughout the state have worked hard in advocating for the, the need for these funds. And I think they were successful in obtaining those funds for these purposes. And, you know, and so, it, it, this isn't taking, I, I agree with you in terms of other, other departments, but the fact of the matter is, is these are special dollars that came down through the legislature because of, because of the hard work involved in, in, in saying why they should be allocated.
I agree with that, and that's why I'm going to support it.
All right.
Okay, any further?
I just want to clarify, the motion was to approve the recommendation.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just if I could, you each have received a handout today. Just kind of want to provide just a quick overview on the public safety fund committees. Again, with your actions on the 12th, and then this morning here, of that, $942,019, this board has supported utilizing $878,134, or 93% of our funding. That will, that will leave $63,885 remaining. As we've talked about previously, there's no, there's not a deadline to spend these, these funds, but just an awareness that, that we still have those available to, if there are any additional dollars that we want to spend that fall within the, the public safety criteria.
Okay. On that, there's a restorative justice position. Have, we, did we approve that before, is that what?
We did, Mr. Chair, on the 12th, yes.
Very good, okay.
And just, I would just note that in addition to the, the stipends, we also did cover the cost of FICA and Medicare within that also. That was encompassed within, within the last agreement.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can follow up, you know, based on this and the actions that we did, I, you know, there, the, it's, right now, the, that number of, of $267,265, that, that is a, a calculation based on what is expected right now and what we have right now. And, and if you'll notice in there, it includes an even number of $9,000 in FICA. That, those are, those are projected numbers. So I'm glad Steve did bring up the piece about the remaining funds. We won't know the exact- about the remaining funds. We won't know the exact allocation of those dollars paid until that second payment in July is done. The likelihood that it's going to be exactly $267,265 is, I, I, it's, it's a good guess, but that's what it is. You know, so I think we need to be aware of that with what we've done, that that number will change with the actual numbers paid.
All right. Very good.
And Mr. Chair, commissioners, thank you for the support for the sheriff's office. I know it is very much appreciated. So thank you for that support. And if you find yourself at the Roasted Rail tomorrow morning between 7:00 and 8:30, it's National Coffee with a Cop Day. And the Roasted Rail has offered to host us. So the sheriff's office will be there from 7:00 AM to 8:30 tomorrow morning.
You buying coffee?
I'll buy you coffee.
Okay.
Where's this at at the Roast?
Oh, yes.
In Dilworth, I think it is, isn't it?
It is in Dilworth, yep, on the east side of Dilworth, in the rail district there.
Very good.
Also, the sheriff's office is having a sock drive. We're in competition with other local law enforcement agencies. So if somebody out there is willing to support the sheriff's office, we do have a box in the lobby of the LEC where you can bring socks, brand-new socks, and make sure you put them in the sheriff's office box because there's another box there too for more at PD. So we want to make sure we get them in the right one.
Okay. Thank you for your work.
You're going to be in the...
I cuts corners. I buy two packages of socks and donate them, one to each.
There you go. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Well, with our time constraints here, the jacket put is on. I each got two minutes here, three boys. Jenny, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week was my busy week, so I will try to encompass it briefly. Last Tuesday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health, Moorhead Clinic Construction Meeting. We had a walk through the final tasks and coordination to complete Phase One. We were able to see the new, the boardroom that will be dual-purpose for therapies and board meetings. Wednesday, the 27th, I attended the FMDA Land Management Committee. We haven't met for about a year and a half because the work is happening on the respective Minnesota and North Dakota committees. We did discuss the dispersal. There was a recommendation to move towards dispersal for some excess lands that were acquired. They were needed in the additional, the beginning drawings, but once those final drawings came through, there were some acres and tracts of land that were not needed. It is our recommendation to move that towards dispersal, to get that back into the public's hand. Obviously, there will be some, in, some restrictions in regards to building that will happen on some of those, not all, but certainly appreciate getting that back into the public's hands. And based on what the policy and procedures are, there is a procedure on who those lands will be offered to first, basically, for those who they were purchased from and then the neighbor bordering landowners, et cetera. Thursday, the 28th, I attended the Solid Waste Advisory Meeting. We had general business landfill and solid waste updates. That was out at our Resource Recovery Center. Did talk a little bit. This is a carryover conversation from other meetings about what Clay County's recommendation will be for Emerald Ash Bore infected wood dispersal, disposal. That recommendation policy, if you will, will be coming from our solid waste director in the next week or so. That afternoon, I attended the Moorhead Clay County JPA. We approved several negotiation summaries and a RHDP MAX allotment. We did go into an executive session regarding last written offers that are in the process of going out. Our hope is that, as is the case, it's, they're moving towards resolution with several landowners. That's not an action that will stop that process. We will continue to have as many, or they will continue to have as many conversations with landowners as possible in those days. And then at the end, we did have a property management request for building storage. I did recommend they work with our planning and zoning director as that may be something that they need to acquire an interim, interim use permit from the Planning Commission for. Friday, September 29th, I had a follow-up fingerprinting meeting conversation with our administrator and the city of Moorhead mayor and their city manager as, as well as Derek LaPointe. As you recall, there's some issues regarding the Idemia contract with DHS, lack of availability for Minnesota side appointments, and some, some disruption in service based on the North Dakota site that's currently offering that fingerprinting service. We will continue to problem solve and see what solution we can work towards, but certainly it's a tricky contract that they have, given the lack of Minnesota side service. Monday, October 2nd, yesterday, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee Meeting. Yesterday was the first day that MetroCog is now a TMA, a Transportation Management Area. That is something that that board has been working and preparing for, for a significant amount of time. As you recall, once the census came out, based on our size, that bumped us up into the TMA planning. There are several issues over the next 18 months that we will continue to work through, one of which is what the policy board makeup will be regarding North Dakota DOT and MINDOT. North Dakota DOT has, has requested that they have a seat at the table. Minnesota has not given a solid answer yet. That's the, the, the direction of MetroCog Executive Board, that we allow them to compete, complete ex officio status. Our concern is that adding them into a full board, voting member could change the ability to get a quorum and certainly would not allow one entity to have a voting member without the other. So we will work through those. That is all identified in our articles of association. And then two, based on West Fargo's makeup, they are now approaching the size of Moorhead. And so Moorhead has two members and it will likely be something that they will offer to the city of West Fargo as well. But that, of course, will go through the process of policy board. And then at the end, we did talk about the proposed BNSF study. This is something that Dilworth has worked tirelessly with them. It's a $300,000 study. The local share, it was identified early that BNSF would cover that in the amount of $100,000. Dilworth and MetroCog then countered to see if they would cover $150,000 of the study, which would take all of the local match percentage. So as you know, the, probably the second hardest person in, in group to work with in the nation is the railroads. They will continue to reach out and see if they can get a commitment on that. And then yesterday, I also attended the Clay County Withdrawal Management Facility Update. We're hoping to have that building enclosed by the second to last weeks of November. If you've not driven by, do so. It is quickly taking shape. It is very large and we're excited about the therapies that will be offered in that building. But there was some dirt that was moved for the DMV site to get that off of the potential parking lot so that they could get the underground things done. The city of Moorhead has requested that that's moved. It will potentially create a snow fence for 15th Avenue. So we will work to see how much work we can get done on the site and get that moved before snow, which will hopefully not come until January. That concludes my report.
Or not at all.
Okay. I didn't mean to put a limit on anybody. Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On September 27th, Wednesday, the 27th, I had a Prairie Lake Solid Waste Meeting in Purim. We go over the typical thing. Our finances are in very good shape. One of the things I want to report on that is, is really significant to Clay County is our deliveries. In the past, I've, you know, I've mentioned where we, we were behind is by as many as 1500 to 1600 tons delivered. And we are now down to 366 tons that were, that were short of delivery based on, on our required, and that's a, that number rolls over from year to year. So that's a significant savings. You know, I, I told our SWAC committee that, that basically is like $150,000 savings to us because we pay that whether we deliver it there or not. And so by delivering it there, you know, we're fulfilling what we paid for. And at the same point, we're reducing what's going into our landfill. So it's a really good position to finally be in. We received a plant manager's report. They've had some shutdowns. And I think for the first time since we've been on, been a partner in that facility, we're actually going to meet the projected tons that are, that were projected to go through that facility, which this year was projected at 55,000 tons. We did receive a, we did approve the, the process for determining COLAs for the employees there. And that, and that is going to be based on, we agreed for 2024 to use the model that we've done with our Triple RDC, and that is to all member counties will, whatever they have for COLA, we're going to take the average of those member counties. And that's going to be the COLA that's going to be determined on an annual basis. The, we've got an audit management letter. That's, there were no findings on that, so that turned out good. The Solid Waste Association, the managers had their annual meeting and we got report back. And it was reported at both the Prairie Lakes and the SWAC meeting on, there's some significant discussion regarding demo landfills and what the future of those will be and how they'll have to be monitored. And I, and we obviously have a, we have a demo landfill here in Clay County that's privately operated. And I, Cory brought, mentioned to us that I believe that their renewal application, they intend to go for renewal and I permit, and I believe that is for 2024, I think, is what Cory said. So we'll monitor that. We, hopefully that will continue without interruption and without additional requirements that could cause that to change. On the, that afternoon, we had the diversion land management meeting. Commissioner Mojo talked about that very well. I think in our lands, in our lands policies for excess lands, we've, that, that policy took a number of years to come up with the, the final policy on that. And so we basically, through this process, we said to follow that. And then again, it goes to the original owners. They get first crack back at it than neighbors. The only thing that we also talked about then is at what price. And I, you know, and I think there's an appraisal process involved. There, somebody who we bought land from three years ago, they're not going to be guaranteed to be paid what we paid them at that point because of the, you know, the increased values that are there. On the 28th, Solid Waste Advisory Committee Meeting, Commissioner Mojo talked about that. There was a, Shannon did talk about the, the waste sort, looking for volunteers to work through the waste sort. I don't, I didn't write down the date. Maybe it's right here. October 19th, they were wondering, Frank, if you were going to be available for that again. I'm, I'm teased.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
You, you know what I'm talking about.
I just realized what you were talking about.
[laughing]
I know, I'm busy.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, that's on October, Thursday, October 19th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. If there's anybody interested to go in and, and basically, it's kind of a, they do a study of what's in all of the garbage, in the waste that's put in that everybody does. So it's not the cleanest job. Wear, don't wear your Sunday church clothes if you go. That same day, we had the Moorehead Clay County Joint Powers. Again, Commissioner Mojo talked about all the different things going on there. I don't really have anything to add to that. Then later that day, we had our diversion board authority meeting and got a, received a report from the Army Corps and we're on the processes going forward. We did hold a executive session that deals with some of the contracts moving forward. Let's see. Same thing. We had the property acquisition issues confirmed and approved following the processes. Yesterday, we had the withdrawal management construction meeting. All is going well. We got a tour of it and it's, it's moving right along. And it's, it's going to be a pretty impressive facility when it's done. And I think, Steve, I think you asked the question yesterday, are they on time? And he said yes to maybe within a couple of weeks or something. So that's encouraging to, to see. And on, yesterday morning, our highway tracking committee took a tour to Holly. We received word that MINDOT is, is interested in, in, they're, they're going to, they're looking for somebody to take over their property that they have. They're right on Highway 10. And it could be, it could be a potential good use for our highway department that could see some significant travel time savings. So we, we went there to review it. We don't, there's no recommendation moving forward right now. We're, we're kind of waiting to see what, we know what the county appraisal is on it. We're waiting to, MINDOT is doing their own appraisal and we're waiting to see what that happens. And if the numbers come in right, that might be a topic of discussion where it could be in, in the county's interest to, to get acquiring that property. So that concludes my report.
Dave? Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 26th, last Tuesday, I attended the public safety meeting and discussed the funds that we just voted on. That was with Commissioner Campbell, County Administrator Larson, Darren Brooks, and the sheriff and chief deputy. And I'm glad that it worked out to everybody's approval. On the 27th, I attended the Moorhead, or the Metro Flood Diversion Authority Finance Meeting virtually. Had a number of items, just sort of standard business, approved a couple of contracts for snow removal and property relocation, and looked at the 24 draft budget, which at this point is 218 million. The following day, had the diversion authorities board meeting, which Commissioner Campbell covered. One item that is coming up is ribbon cutting for the diversion inlet structure, which would be the 27th of this month. I believe it's going to be in the morning. And we might keep an eye out for that. If there's going to be more than two commissioners there, we may want to advertise it. But I think the specifics are going to be, be released here shortly. The following, no, I'm sorry. On the second, yesterday, I attended the AMC Policy Committee for Chairs and Vice Chairs of the Policy Groups. We basically covered the fall conference that we discussed. And it's kind of a backwards look. They had a survey. We went over the results of that, which were very positive. Members who indicated that they didn't have much of an idea on how the policy worked when they started the, the conference had a, had about a 23% to 28% increase in knowledge of the procedure at the end of the conference. Just looked at things. Overall, there's a few areas that may be tweaked. They're going, the staff for AMC is going to continue to work on it. But overall, got a good review on how we do, do business in, in making our policy decisions. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple meetings last Thursday on the 28th. The Historical Society, Cultural Society, we met for a couple hours to have a retreat. Our staff was all there. We reviewed past and present activities. And we talked about future exhibits and events coming up. And just want to pass on what a remarkable staff we have. And we appreciate all they do over there at the Historical Society Building. Second, I had a CAP LP meeting. That was our board meeting. We received our audit report. We received our audit report, which was a clean report, everything in good standing. Other business reports were given. A couple of things I want to make note of, the amount of grants that CAP LP puts in every year is ongoing, and one that they're applying for, that they continue to apply for, which is really a good grant to receive, and is working with the Department of Employment and Economic Development of the State of Minnesota for adult supportive service grants. We work in coordination with them, state on this, and it's, ends up being an eight-month workforce training in the areas of mainly trades, such as welding, and then also in the medical field with the development of CNAs. The ma, the last part of our meeting, which was, we didn't, we didn't know about the federal shutdown right at that time, and so anyway, it was a very good, very good discussion, and I think a good thing to know, what does CAP LP need to do if the federal government shuts down? So we got a 45-day reprieve here, and I guess I want everybody to know that, even if it would have happened, they were in good standing without any shakeup at all, all the Head Start, all, all the, all the facilities that they run would be, we have good reserves, we have state funds to keep that going for about 45 days. So, by the time, if we have problems 45 days from now, again, so many things are about cash flow, right, and operations. Anyway, by that time, there will be some grants coming in play on December 1st from the federal government, for the Head Start Program, anyway. So I think we're, we'll be in pretty good shape, but again, I, I want everybody to know that we're really, when these things come up, we're hurt much more by state shutdown than we are by federal. But we'll, we're in good shape now, and we, hopefully, you know, the federal government will get it figured out along the way. But that's my report.
Okay. My report permits, Commissioner Kevin talked about was the Holly Site Highway Tracking went down there, and it's five acres of land there, there's two buildings, one heated, one unheated. So, like I said, we're just waiting to hear what their appraisal is, and to find out whether it's something that we could look at. Be a good opportunity to get some needed space for the Highway Department. Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, participated in the Public Safety Committee that has been addressed. Again, I just want to thank the board for their support guidance on that. I think that it's been, was another example of, of establishing the committee and really putting the funds in the, in the best place possible, so thank you guys for, for that support. On the 27th, we had county management, again, talked about a risk management policy that'll be coming here shortly. 2024 budget discussions, the IT, IT provided some updates and ongoing changes. We'll probably be seeing Rory, Rory here before us next week to talk about their Cyber Security Month. Open enrollment is going to be taking, starting in about a month. Anna, right now, is working her butt off to get us ready, and so, again, that's going to be all electronic this year, this year. On the 28th, participated in the SWAC meeting that has been covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. Also that morning, we had some board prep for today. That afternoon, had MCC JPA meeting that's been covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. Met with Darren on a series of HR issues in the county. On the 29th, I participated in the fingerprint meeting with the City of Moorhead, that's been covered by Commissioner Mojo. On the 29th, also met with Matt Jacobson. There's a property north of Glendon that's experiencing some pretty significant impacts from the Buffalo Red, or, excuse me, Buffalo River, and so having some ongoing discussions with, with the watershed in the county, and how to best move forward and help, if we can, for those citizens. Participated yesterday in the MinDOT Facility Tour, and also the Withdrawal Management. It was fun, fun to see that area. Again, just excited about the opportunities that are going to be provided there, and also just really pleased with the, the work that Gertz and his team have, have been doing. I did have some ongoing discussions with Rhonda and Kathy specifically over last week about the federal shutdown. Again, we've dodged that, I think that from, from both of their standpoints, again, if it's a short piece, two weeks or less, pretty limited, limited impacts in both their departments with the grant funds they receive. We have assessor, assessor interviews this afternoon, and hope to have a recommendation next week at board. And also, just to make you aware, Darren and I will be gone Wednesday afternoon through Friday at our association meetings. So, that concludes my report.
Okay. Brian? Jackie? We got coffee left. Okay. Anybody else? Your turn.